Calling to order the Municipality of Anchorage Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting for September 12th, 2011. Secretary, please call the roll.
Nancy Pease. Jim Frederick. Connie Yoshimura. Arthur Eishem.
Here.
Bruce Phelps. Stacy Dean.
Here.
Perry Parks.
Here.
Dana Pruse. Richard Wilson.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the minutes for Monday, July 25th, Monday, August 1st, and Monday, August 8th. Take a positive motion for approval.
The move.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Wilson. Is there any changes or additions to the minutes? Is there any objection? And the minutes are approved. Next is disclosures. Ms. Dean, will you please take care of the disclosures this evening?
Commissioner Pease, do you have any disclosures tonight?
No.
Commissioner Wilson?
No.
Commissioner Parks?
No.
Commissioner Eishem?
None.
And I have neither.
Okay, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, and there's five resolutions for approval. Take a... Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, wait a minute. I've got a special thing here. We've got an information item, and it's a concept report for the Campbell airstrip road upgrade. Is there any information that staff has for us on this, or is this just for our perusal?
Mr. Chair, no, there is no information. This is just to give the Planning Commission members a heads-up that this will be coming forward. There is nobody from CRW here tonight to address any questions on this.
Okay. Do you have any idea when it's going to appear before us?
It may not be until... It may not be until November.
Okay.
I don't see it in October.
Okay. Anyway, this is a thing put out by CRW, so we need to start reading it and looking at it, so get a feel for what's happening. Okay, thank you. Ms. Pease?
Yes, I did have a question on that. The cover letter was addressed to the commissioners, and there was a date for comments of August, or I think it was August 28th. So I wasn't sure whether it was coming to us, or whether they were soliciting comments as individuals, and if so, whether it was too late.
Ms. Pease, I would go ahead and... Mr. McLaughlin, you have an answer to that?
Yes, I was around during the discussions of context-sensitive solutions, and the way project management and engineering department wanted to handle certain projects like this in this context-sensitive solutions sort of process was simply to provide the latest plans that they had to the commissioners early, informational only, and if they wanted to comment, they were welcome to. This will formally be submitted for approval to the commission at a later date, and that's just the way, you know, every few months, the commission will see something like this, where it's just early informational. And that bit about seeking comments is, they wanted to open it up to the commissions, welcome to comment, but it's really more geared towards the other reviewers. They're seeking comment from other agencies a few months before it comes to the commission.
Okay, thank you. My suggestion is, is that I suspect that that August of 2011 deadline is somewhat phony, so I would suggest that if you, any of us have comments, you go ahead and send the information to Wendy Wilber, and her email address is right there on the front page on the cover sheet. So this context-sensitive solution-type stuff is basically just a lot of real early planning, so there's nothing wrong with putting stuff in before it goes to public hearing. Okay, now we'll go to the consent agenda, and we have five resolutions there. Take a positive motion for approval. Been moved by Mr. Parks, seconded by Ms. Pease. Okay, are there any consent agenda items that we wish to pull? No items to pull. Any objections? Then all items are approved. Resolution 2011-026, 2011-028, 2011-029, 2011-030, and 2011-031. Okay, the next item is unfinished business, item E. Staff, do you have any input on this?
Yes, Mr. Chair. There was initially supposed to be... Staff was trying to schedule a work session for 5:30 tonight whereby there would be a response from both Mr. Weaver and Mr. Municipal Attorney, Dennis Wheeler. And we have no new information in response to the board's questions about their role in reviewing these plans. However, the information will be forthcoming. There is a proposal to set up a work session at 5:30 for the November 14th, 2011 meeting, at which time there should be a written memo. It's already written, it is in the Law Department, but we have not yet had it released from the Law Department. But that would be over the director's signature and the municipal attorney's signature. So that will be brought forward again for the November 14th Planning Commission meeting.
Okay, do you need a motion from us, an approval, to move this to the 14th?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, fine. So we need a positive motion to move this item E, case 2010-076, to postpone it to date certain, November 14th. Take a positive motion for that. Been moved by Mr. Wilson, seconded by Ms. Pease. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Okay, that's now date certain, November 14th. Okay, now we're moving into the public hearing. Before we start the public hearing portion, as you can see, obviously, we have five people here tonight, so that's called a short board. And when you have a short board, if you get one person not voting for it, you lose. So the petitioners have the opportunity to request a postponement to a later date, and it'll be at no cost to the petitioner or anything like that. So before we even move into any of the public hearings, we've got one, two, three, five of them this evening. So is there a petitioner here from Legacy LLC for case 2011-096?
Yes.
Okay, do you wish to postpone, or are you gonna go move forward? Okay. Okay, would you please come forward and, you know, state for the record that you request that it not be postponed, and you hear it this evening?
Good evening, I'm Michelle Ritter with DAHLI HKM, and we request to move forward this evening with the Legacy LLC case.
Okay, and that's case 2011-096?
Yes, 2011-096.
Okay, very good, thank you. Okay, 2011-095, this petitioner's Aliaska Resort Development.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Tim Potter with DAHLI HKM, representing Aliaska tonight, and we've got two cases, items two and three, and we're looking to move forward tonight.
Okay, thank you. So that's cases 2011-095 and S-11884. Okay, the next one is case 2011-091, Fred Meyer Stores. I'm sorry, that's postponed. Okay. It wasn't in... Yeah, we're gonna have to deal with that, just a minute, let's get through this. And the last case is 2011-099, Municipality of Anchorage, is the amends amendment to the tip.
Mr. Chair, as I stated earlier, we're running up against the end of the fiscal year on this one, and so we have it scheduled for the Assembly tomorrow. We do need to try and get it done tonight.
Very good. Okay, we've got one case that's postponed, that 2011-091, and we'll need a positive motion to postpone to date certain. Moved by Ms. Pease, seconded by Mr. Parks. The date certain is 10/10/11. Is there any objection? Okay, case 2011-091 is now postponed to 10/10/11. Yes.
Excuse me. Before you begin the public hearings, because item number two, case 2011-95, and item number three is the preliminary plat, one is the master development plan, they're typically heard together as in the same public hearing, but with extended time for comment from the public.
Right, and I'll go ahead and make that decision when we come to that one.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'll be arbitrary about my time limits on that. Thank you for calling that to my attention. Okay, well, now we'll move into public hearing, case G1, and that's 2011-096, petitioner's Legacy LLC, and it's amending a conditional use for a nursing home. So if we could hear the staff report on that, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The existing site plan is on page 11 of the packet, and the proposed amendment change to the site plan is on page 12 of the packet. Legacy LLC is requesting an amendment to a final conditional use for a nursing home to add a new building called a transitional care facility. They also want to add a driveway to Boniface. I could talk about the history of this project. Essentially, this is the latest phase of this nursing home site. Be happy to expand more, also the petitioner's here to answer questions you might have. The department does recommend approval for this amendment. The department finds that the general standards for a conditional use have been met, and there's a discussion of that on pages three, four, and five. The supplementary district regulations for hospitals and nursing facilities, the standards also met for that, and the conditional use standards for healthcare facilities, those standards are met. The only change that staff has to the recommendation, the conditions of approval on pages eight, nine, and 10, is on page eight, under Department Recommendation, on the second line. We'd like to add four 60 months as the approval. So it would read, "The department recommends approval of the amendment to the final conditional use located at track A-11, Waldeck subdivision, addition number two, comma," and here's the new language right here. You would insert four 60 months, subject to the conditions below. We needed to define the approval time period for this as five years, because the petitioner is working on funding for the project and issues related to that, and so a conditional use is usually only good for one year, and if they don't break ground, then they lose it and have to come back. But because the department recommends approval for this phase, we spoke to the petitioner about adding four 60 months. It just means that they, as long as they get the project underway within the next five years, then they wouldn't have to return to the commission. The department recommends approval, subject to those conditions and the change. Be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Any questions for staff? Ms. Pease?
Yes, the parking configuration has changed, and is the staff... Has the staff verified that the parking, number of parking spaces is suitable, and that the circulation is adequate? I mean, I don't have any particular concerns, I just wanted to know if the parking and circulation for the new layout have been verified?
Yes, they have.
Any further questions for staff? Okay, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Let me go ahead and read the rules here before we kick off. After staff presentation is complete on a public hearing item, the chair will ask for public testimony on the issue. Persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established in the commission rules of procedure, and these time limits are 10 minutes for the petitioner, five minutes for representatives of groups such as community councils and PTAs, and individuals have three minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the commission. An individual may have appeal rights relating to any action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes. Appeals must be filed with the clerk's office within 20 days after the Planning and Zoning Commission's final decision. And finally, any individual may request written findings from any commission decision within seven days. So let's go ahead and hear from the petitioner's representative.
Good evening, I'm Michelle Ritter with DAHLI HKM. With me this evening is John Hale and Jerry Hendrickson with Providence LLC to answer any questions that you may have for them. This is the Providence, Alaska cottages project, located near the northeast corner of Boniface and Debar. As Mr. McLaughlin indicated, this conditional use permit does have a little bit of a history. So you've... Originally, the site plan was approved to include eight cottages and the Commons Building. We later came back to amend the configuration of the site plan, as well as presented a conceptual master plan that included four variations. This amendment will allow for the inclusion of a transitional care unit, or also known as the TCU. A TCU is a short-term residential care facility to meet the needs of patients who don't need the level of care that the hospital provides, but they do require some level of care prior to going home, either after medical procedure or illness. The first phase of the development, it's going to be one building, but with a future expansion. The first building will be about 35,000 square feet and 50 beds. There may be an additional about 6,000 square feet and 22 beds that come online as the needs require. The parking, landscaping, utilities, pedestrian, and vehicles circulation are all provided for the full build-out. The architectural design of the transitional care unit will be compatible with what you have seen for the cottages. It is more of a medical facility, so it does have some commercial value to it, but it's been softened with slopes and architectural features to make it blend in with the residential neighborhood. Bringing on the TCU will bring some overall site changes that include enlarging the parking area. To address Mrs. Pease's question, there's 139 parking spaces that are required, and there's going to be over about 200 for the site. There's also going to be the reconfiguration of the existing trail that originally ran from the Commons parking lot to the back of house of the Commons Building. That will be reconfigured to be an emergency access onto Boniface. And there will also be some reconfiguration at the parking area entrance, as well as addition of more crosswalks and sidewalks for better pedestrian circulation. We have updated the TIA. It's in review with the Department of Transportation and the municipality, and it does include the numbers for the full build-out of the TCU. We have met all of the previous conditions of approval for the two other conditional use permits that you've seen before here, and we've read the conditions of approval for this amendment, and we accept all those as revised by staff this evening. And I'd like to thank you for your time, and welcome any questions.
Ms. Pease?
Yes, I have two questions on the parking, and staff might give advice on this also. The perpendicular parking there is on a curve, and it's really close to the driveway entrance. Is that typical? What is the required distance from the driveway entrance, or is there none, since it's an interior driveway?
I don't believe that there is one, and the driveway from Boniface isn't considered to be any sort of, like, even the local road, it's all internal driveway.
Okay.
There's no requirement, and traffic commented on... Well, in discussions with traffic, they did not have any concern about the parking layout as it's shown on that curve.
Okay. And my second question for Ms. Ritter is, why would Providence want to build 200 parking spots if only 139 are required, given the cost and the maintenance and the sprawl?
A lot of that has to do with visitors coming onto the site. There's been an expressed concern about there not being adequate parking for the heightened visitor times. Other than that, no, Providence has anything to add?
And could staff respond to that?
Staff, I mean, staff doesn't have an opinion on the providing more parking than what is required, but I do recall that the first iteration of this project, Mr. Pruse went on the record, and I think the commission supported this, seeking more parking than what was required. It was sort of a surprise to staff, but the commission went on the record as supporting the more parking than what is required, and with the reason being, just as Ms. Ritter stated, that there are a lot of people that visit all on the weekend, or that sort of thing. That's all I have.
Mr. Parks?
I have one question to staff. Is the exits that are on Boniface going to be in place now, or is it going to be in the future? The ones on... I'm sorry, on Debar, I said Boniface, I meant Debar.
Mr. Parks, thank you for the question. So the driveway that... The one driveway to the north on Boniface exists now. The new one that's proposed is that service entrance that's a little bit further south on Boniface, and I guess that driveway would go in sometime at the beginning, I guess... Ms. Ritter would answer this question, be able to answer this question better than me, but at some point, when they recorded the notice of zoning action and proceeded to build the transitional care facility, then they would need that second entrance. The connection to Debar Road, that is with a future phase of this development, there are future phases or phases of this development, and with what is shown and what's being... With the request is from Legacy LLC here, there's no need for a driveway to Debar Road. The petitioner is in discussions with, or has had discussions with, the fire department and other municipal agencies about, is there a need for that access? Will there be one in the future? And that's still in the planning phases, but there's no requirement for that at this time, and that's not a part of this approval.
So the southbound entrance, the one that's on Boniface, will not happen until the transational property is built, the one that you're proposing, is that correct?
It could come online sooner. We do have approved driveway permits for both the north and south driveways. And just to kind of expand on what Mr. McLaughlin said about the Debar entrance points that you're seeing, DOT had asked us to reserve these two locations, depending on what the future configuration of the... How the future configuration is developed. They just wanted to have some sort of assurance that we've... That we would have that connection, and where it would occur.
Mr. Wilson? That same barge lane entrance off of Boniface, is that... How wide will that be?
I believe it will be 20 feet.
Okay.
20 to 24. So, and that's been approved by the fire department.
Just since we don't have a full master plan for the rest of the property facing onto Debar Road, I'm not sure we have that, do we? No?
No, we do not have one at this time.
It just occurred to me that maybe that could be another entrance to the entire complex, if... And it's right up against the property line on the other property.
And the property owner is the same property owner to both the north and the south, and the reason why you're seeing those driveways at the property line is because in the future, depending on what his development of these two tracks may be, he has requested that we leave open the potential for shared access.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was getting at. You anticipated my question, thank you. Ms. Pease?
Yeah, I wanted to follow up with Mr. McLaughlin. With regard to the municipal's position on parking overages, in general, I believe the city and the commission have taken a position against excessive parking overages in the past for reasons of permeable surface and just this low-value use of land in general. Is that accurate in general? And given that this is about a 43% overage, would staff be willing to take a look at what an appropriate overage would be?
Well, these are sort of academic-type questions, or... I mean, professionally, I hate over-parking, and I want to reduce parking wherever possible to make better use of the land for landscaping, open space, or any other thing besides permeable, you know, paved space. But that's about as far as I can say. But with this particular development, the commission, yeah, I agree with you that Anchorage 2020 supports efficient use of land, and the department's position should be not to provide more parking than what is required. But with this particular case, the commission's been on the record about wanting more parking than what was required.
Although, just to be clear on the record, we haven't looked at this number of parking spaces before, and we haven't looked at this particular building, so I just wanted to... Is that correct? We've never seen this configuration before?
No, you have not.
And this proposed... Okay, thank you.
Mr. Wilson? Thank you. On that point, it seems that the proposing party here is... Has indicated that spending the money on parking as opposed to a less expensive use of some of that property that's now designated for parking. There's a reason for going above the limit. How far above that limit is related to the type of land use. The type of use of the facility is going to have a lot of visitors, you said, and it's going to have a need for parking, and the worst thing that I can imagine in a facility of this kind is to arrive there in the winter and not have any parking anywhere on the site, and have to park out... in the winter and not have any parking anywhere on the site, and have to park out on Boniface or something. So, it, you know, while the guidelines are good and necessary, the particular application of how far over, I think, should be left, in this case, up to the proposing party. Thank you.
Any further questions for Ms. Ritter?
I have one question. When we looked at this thing previously, we heard testimony from the landowner on that B3 property about the drainage.
Yes.
Has that been sort of resolved?
It has, not entirely. What Providence and Mr. Walker have kind of done is we've drafted up a letter of agreement for shared drainage. Both the municipality and Providence's legal has reviewed that. Mr. Walker is now reviewing that. And the final plat being recorded is contingent on either that letter being signed and recorded, or a drainage easement being placed on the plat. So, we are at good negotiations at this point, and have offered an alternative that I think both parties can agree to live with.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions for Ms. Ritter?
Okay. Let's see, you've got about, what, four minutes left? Oh, you've got six minutes and 51 seconds for rebuttal, if there is any rebuttal to do. So, let's go ahead, and you can go ahead and take your seat, and then we'll take public testimony, if anybody wishes to testify, and then you can come back up. Is there anybody that wishes to testify on case number 2011-096, amendment to a final conditional use permit for a nursing home? Is there anybody that wishes to testify? Is there anybody that wishes to testify? You have the floor again. You have six minutes and 51 seconds for rebuttal.
I guess I'll use my rebuttal to thank you all for your time. It's been a big work in progress, and we appreciate you seeing us here again this evening, and thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing. Matter rests with the commission. Ms. Pease, do you have a question, or did you just push the button accidentally?
No, I did have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
For Ms. Ritter, I was just going to ask, with the transitional living facility added, what is the resident population, and what is the staff at any given time?
I'm actually going to defer that question to Providence. They're more familiar with their staffing schedule.
Good evening. My name is John Hale from Providence. Appreciate the opportunity to answer your question. With the current plan before you, there would be 96 residents in the cottages. The transitional care facility could have up to 50 patients in it at a time. I'll apologize that I cannot give you an exact number of staff off the top of my head. I didn't anticipate we'd have a question like that. But I would expect we would have close to 150 to 200 staff that could be on-site any given time.
Once again, 150 to 200 staff?
Total that could be on-site. Not all of those people would be in driving vehicles.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, take a process motion for approval on this case number 2011-096. Been moved by Ms. Pease, seconded by Mr. Parks. Ms. Pease, would you like to speak to your motion?
I actually should say that I move for approval of case 2011-096, with the department recommendations in our packet on pages eight through 10, 17 conditions in all, with the following change to the first, or to the preamble A, which is to insert the timeframe of 60 months after the word Track A-1-1. Insert the words "for 60 months."
Any further discussion?
I'll speak to my motion.
Go ahead.
The Planning and Zoning Commission has seen this proposal several times. We've reviewed the circulation, the drainage, particularly the pedestrian circulation, and we've had various discussions on the parking. This iteration comes to us with 200 parking spaces, which is about 43% over the minimum required under municipal code of 139 spaces. We're approving it with this parking amount, but I will add that this is not the typical level of scrutiny that staff usually runs the numbers and comes up with a justification for the overage. And we don't usually let the client decide what the overage is, because that's, as Mr. McLaughlin said in professional policy, something that we try to avoid, excess paved surface. But in this case, with up to about 146 or 150 residents, and 150 to 200 staff at any given time, as given in verbal testimony, it does appear that there will be quite a bit of coming and going. And although most of the residents are not expected to be drivers, it appears that there is a fair amount of circulation, probably by vehicle. So, although it, again, didn't have this level of scrutiny to the numbers that we usually try to give, we are approving it.
Any further comments from the commission? Ms. Pease, do you want to make some findings?
The proposed facility is in keeping or implements the comprehensive plan, the 2020 comprehensive plan, by providing availability of supportive housing opportunities, in this case for persons with special needs. It helps to distribute throughout the municipality residential services. There have been this type of facilities on the west side of town. This adds to the growing northeast side of town, this type of housing supply. Those are Comp Plan Policies 61 and 62. The use, a conditional use, is compatible with the neighborhood. There is an amply sized lot. There is buffering. There's buffering to be provided along the arterial roadway. And therefore, this use is compatible with Comp Plans Policies 6 and 7. And the access is onto major roads, and so traffic has not been raised as a concern. And for these reasons, this is an asset, an important component needed for housing some of our populations.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any objection? That passes. Okay, we're going to move on to cases two and three, 2011-095 and S11884. We'll hear these two cases together. We'll give the petitioner 15 minutes. We'll give representatives of groups seven and a half, and individuals five. So, let's go ahead and hear the staff report on case 2011-095, Aliaska Resort Development, site plan review for a master development plan, and case S11884, also by Aliaska Resort Development, for a plat review by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first case for the Aliaska Resort is a development master plan approval. It was submitted with a request to waive a grading plan, floor plans, building elevations, and renderings, and a landscape plan that's required by 2109. The petition site is heavily forested and steeply sloped, and it's traversed by a number of drainage ways. The waivers are requested due to the terrain and the special physical features of the property, that it indicate that the lots will be individually developed, they will be individually owned, and there will be, each lot will be designed with a single-family residential on 12 of the lots to actually work with the environment and the natural features. So therefore, the waivers have been requested, and I will address that later in the presentation. This petition site is within existing Track One, Aliaska Resorts subdivision. It's located east of Verbiere Way and Crystal Mountain Road. There is also a preliminary plat, which is the second case before you tonight, for proposed Glacier Valley Estates subdivision, lots 1 through 15, and tracks one and two. It was submitted concurrently, and it does establish the boundaries for the petition area. The proposed development will be a mix of single-family residential uses on lots 1 through 5, 7 through 11, and 14 through 15, and commercial development on lots 6, 12, and 13. There is some development in the petition area. A water storage tank does exist on proposed Lot 6, and Challenge Alaska was constructed in 2010, and it's going to be located on proposed Lot 12. But at this time, there is no development for the proposed commercial development on Lot 13. In general, reviewing the development master plan, it does conform with the goals of the Girdwood Area Plan that identifies this site for resort development, and it also conforms to the design standards of 2109 for the GRST, the New Base Resort District. The proposed uses for this property are allowed per Table 1 of 2109-050. Glacier Valley Way does function, will function as a local street, providing access to 12 single-family lots. Lots 12 and 13, they do access onto Crystal Mountain Road. And on page 70, there is a cross-section of the proposed typical road section. And generally, it conforms with the cross-section within Title 2109. And there was a, on page 11, there is a diagram of what is contained in 2109. The only difference between the proposed cross-section and the cross-section that is in 2109 is that there is not a separated pedestrian pathway. Now, staff did have a conversation with the deputy director of private development, and she confirmed for me that there are topographical reasons why a detached pedestrian facility cannot be constructed. It is basically trying to balance public safety with the need to minimize excavation within an extremely steeply sloped area, and not to compound drainage issues that may occur with excessive grading to provide a separated pedestrian pathway. And in conversation with the deputy director, she did recommend that the location and the development of the separated pathway be resolved based on engineering and drainage studies that would be performed later within the development of this petition area. So, that will be one recommended change to the recommended conditions of approval, that there needs to be flexibility in the planning for the pedestrian walkway. Also, the area master plan that was actually approved in 2007 will be amended as on page 71 of the packet, there is an extension of Glacier Valley Way that will ultimately connect via a road that is to be developed in the future, and with ultimate connection to Isle burg Road. That is not shown on the area master plan. It is a new development with this particular proposal on page 71. And you can see that Glacier Valley Way is proposed in the future to connect to the Track C Road. Proposed Track One of this preliminary plat development area, the area master plan identifies that for some sort of hotel or lodging, which will have to, the future development will construct a road to connect with Isleburg Road, and Glacier Valley Way will intersect with that proposed future development, thereby providing two means of ingress and egress eventually to this particular development area. This particular preliminary development will provide trails, and will provide open space. Proposed Track Two of the preliminary plat is identified to be open space. The Girdwood Regulations do allow that amendments can be drafted for a development master plan that are unique to the master plan area, and they can be developed to provide the most reasonable and feasible development, given the topography, the drainage features, and the drainage ways that will provide the best development in the future. The amendments to the Girdwood Regulations are shown on page 16 in the table. There is a request to increase the maximum square footage to 1,200 square feet for accessory dwelling units. That's an increase from 750 square feet. There is also, this is based on the terrain and of the property, the topography, the front yard is required to be 13 feet. There's a request to reduce it to 5 feet for living areas, and 10 feet for garages. There is no change to side yards. There is a request to eliminate the 20-foot rear yard for proposed lots 9 through 13. These lots are proposed on the, let me go to the map. They're proposed for the western area of this development, which basically the rear yard will face Chair Three and the ski slopes. And the amendment would reduce the rear yard requirement to zero. It should be noted that in the adjacent track, there is a 20-foot development, no build development easement that is being provided with the plat, that basically will provide some setback distance from the development on those lots 9 through 13. The request is to reduce the maximum height of the residential lots from 75 feet to 45 feet, to reduce the minimum natural vegetation from 30 to 20%, the minimum permeable surface from 50 to 30%, and to allow use of the paved shoulders for pedestrian amenities. It's noted that Glacier Valley Way is longer than 450 feet as required by the Girdwood Regulations. However, as mentioned earlier, there will be a future extension of Glacier Valley Way to the larger circulation system that is proposed for this development. It is not existing now, but will exist in the future, with future development. And applying to a lot- And applying to lots 12 and 13 only are commercial lots. There's a request to allow required parking to be within the required yard setbacks so that there can be a common development between those two commercial developments, one of which exists is Challenge Alaska. The department does recommend approval of the master plan. It's for proposed lots one through 15. The master plan really is proposed lots one through 15, Glacier Valley Estates, those 15 lots. And it's subject to conditions on 19 through 21 of the packet. Staff has been advised of a need to clarify and correct some typographical errors, and so I would like to proceed with that through the, starting with Condition 2A1. The last sentence should read, "The accessory dwelling unit shall not, however, exceed 50 percent of the gross floor area." As written, it says, "The access dwelling unit." It should be "access," "accessory dwelling unit." There are some clarifications that are requested to Condition 2B1. The first one is talking about modifying the front yard setback to a minimum of five feet. And at the end of the sentence, it should re-add in, let's see, "Including any living area above the garage are at the front yard and aligned parallel to the right of way in residential lots one through five, comma, seven through 11, comma, and 14 through 15." The 2B3 needs to be amended in the same manner. It should read, "The maximum building height is limited to 45 feet in residential lots one through five, comma, seven through 11, comma, and 14 through 15." On Condition 3, I've got these written out and can hand them to the chair.
We have copies of them.
Oh, you do?
Yes.
Okay. So can I, I did not realize you have copies of them. So there's no objection from staff to the amendment to Lot 3C and 4, but there is a question on Condition 5, and that would be directed to the petitioner. And it says to add the language resolved with the MOA planning, and I'm wondering if that should be just a substitute condition rather than adding it to the condition as it exists. And I defer to the petitioner's representative to clarify that question for me.
Okay, we'll do that during his testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
Okay. Ms. Dean.
Through the chair, my question is on Glacier Valley Way. A lot of times, there's a, the city requires a hammerhead or some type of a turnaround area for a fire apparatus. I noticed there isn't one being required. Any particular reason why it's not in this case, and it usually is?
Through the chair, Ms. Dean. That's a question related to the plat, and I believe that Ms. Iverson could respond to that.
That condition is reflected as a condition of approval on the plat, that there be a temporary turnaround for, as approved by the fire safety.
Thank you.
Ms. Pease.
Yes, another access question. Does the no build easement that's provided in Track Two provide the necessary fire emergency access? Is that the intent of the no build easement?
Through the chair, Ms. Pease, no, that's not access. It's the rear yard for lots nine through 13. They're reducing that rear yard to, they're requesting to reduce the rear yard, which is 20 feet by 2109, and they're requesting to reduce that to zero. So to provide the separation that would have been provided with the rear yard on the adjacent track, which is in common ownership, they are providing a 20-foot easement for no development, and that is strictly for separation of uses.
Okay.
Not access.
Another access question, if I may, is future access to, I believe it is Lot One or Track One, is that verified, that it's practicable coming from the, I guess it would be the north? Or is there going to be access off of that cul-de-sac? One of the commenters, Ms. Underwood from Traffic, commented that staff understood that access to Track One wasn't practical from Glacier Valley Circle, so I'm just asking whether there is verified practical access from the north.
Through the chair, Ms. Pease, it's a 50-foot drop at that location. It's extremely, there isn't a reasonable access to Glacier Valley Circle because of the very steep drop in topography. So when Track One, and I have to refer you back to the map on page 71, when Track One is developed with either the lodge or the hotel, whatever that development turns out to be, it's a lodging, there is a proposed circulation route that will provide access to that Track One. And it winds through, it's called the Track C Road, and it intersects with Arleberg Avenue as it winds to the west northwest. And Glacier Valley Way that leads to the water tanks is intended to connect with that road that will ultimately be constructed to serve the development on Track One. But there will not be any pedestrian or vehicular access between Glacier Valley Circle and Track One at that location.
And my question is, I don't know whether the Track C Road, any of it's been put in, but is that, is it verified? Has staff verified that that access is practical? I don't know if it's steep, are there wetlands, creeks, and is it verified that that is accessible?
Are you talking about the access from Track One to Arleberg?
Yes.
I would have to defer to the petitioner, because I don't believe the petitioner's representative, I don't believe engineering has actually been done. They may have looked at it when they presented it as an access in the area master plan, but certainly there has not been engineering done on that alignment.
Okay. And my final question regarding access, the staff, I think it was the non-motorized coordinator, requested a ski-back option, connections from the slopes to these recreational, to these neighborhoods. And the master plan on page 71 shows a ski-back trail. I guess it would be parallel to Verbiere Road. That didn't appear, none of that was addressed in the staff's conditions. So how will this subdivision be accessible directly from the slopes? Will that be through that Track One, or how?
Through the chair, Ms. Pease, and Ms. Iverson can also address that question. Verbiere Way was able to be constructed with a separated trail and a separated walkway. And Verbiere Way has been constructed. There is an easement on the prior plat that connects to Verbiere Way, and that would be the access to the ski trails. And I do believe that Ms. Iverson has more information related to the plating of that access.
I think we might be talking about different things. If I understand it, the Verbiere Way trail goes on up to Winter Creek Trail. But for the slopes that will be in Track Two, as I understand it, those are slopes, and maybe the petitioner needs to answer this, people will be skiing down those slopes. And my understanding and looking at the master plan on page 71 is that you're going to be able to ski off of the slopes into these subdivisions, the one along Verbiere, but also this new one. There's something called a ski-back trail, shown on the plat, I mean, on the master plan on page 71. And this was some, a feature that the community wants, is to be able to ski off the slopes to as many neighborhoods as possible.
For clarification, the master plan on page 71 is being amended. I refer to that to show that Glacier Valley Way will ultimately connect to a road that will serve the future development of on Track One. The master plan now on page 69 shows the single-family residential development, the Access Alaska, and the Lot 13 that is proposed for future commercial development. And the plat may show easements for the ski-back trail.
May show? Should show? Does show?
I don't know. I didn't do the plat. Ms. Iverson can provide more information on that.
Thank you. The, what is shown on the master plan as a ski-back trail has been constructed with the improvements to Verbiere and the detached pedestrian path. The, has already been, is existing.
Okay, and so that serves what the community envisions as the ski-back trail?
That's correct.
It's, okay, thank you.
Any further questions for staff? Okay, now, staff, I just have a question. Are we going to get sort of a separate presentation now on the plat?
Yes.
Okay, fine, good. Please, go ahead.
This is Case S11884-1, Glacier Valley Estates subdivision, lots one through 15 and tracks one and two, with a variance from AMC 2180-200, legal and physical access for tracks one and track two, a variance from AMC 2080-330, lot frontage for track two, and a variance from 2180-300B, lot depth for lot one. Given Ms. O'Brien's presentation, I'm going to focus on the variance requests. I believe the other, rest of the site description has been already addressed. Variances are requested from AMC 2180-200, legal and physical access for tracks one and two, and a variance from AMC 2180-300, lot frontage for track two. Criteria one, there are special circumstances or conditions affecting the property that the strict application of the provisions of the subdivision regulations would clearly be impractical, unreasonable, or undesirable. The standard appears to be met for both variance requests. Track Two is currently used as an Alpine ski facility. The track directly to the south is owned by Aliaska Ski Resort, and the track directly east is leased from the state for use by Aliaska. And collectively, these tracks function as the Aliaska Ski Resort with chairlifts and ski runs, crossing legal boundaries and connecting the area. There are numerous ways that this tract is accessed through the surrounding property, either owned or leased to Aliaska to provide adequate access for the tract to function as an Alpine ski area. Track One has frontage and physical access on the Glacier Valley Circle. However, the area of the hillside at that location is near 80 percent slope, and physical access will not be possible. Given the steep mountainside resort nature of this development, it would be unreasonable to require physical access. According to the area master plan, a hotel with up to 300 units is planned for track two, and when this development occurs, a separate development master plan will be submitted. And per the area master plan, a road will be constructed through Track C to provide physical access to Track One. Standard two, the granting of the specific variance will not be detrimental to the public welfare or interest to other property in the area in which the property is situated. This standard appears to be met for both variance requests. The only tracks affected are proposed tracks one and two. No future development will incur in track two, and no development will incur in track one until a road is constructed through Track C to the north. This variance will not impact traffic or fire safety. Standard three, such variance will not have the effect of nullifying the intent or purpose of the subdivision regulations. This standard appears to be met. The intent of AMC 2080-200 and 2180-330 is to provide for an efficient use of land and ensure that property does not become landlocked. It is also to ensure that all property has a safe means for physical access. There is no intention to develop track two. It will remain an Alpine ski facility, and track one will only be developed when the road through track C is complete. Standard four, undue hardship would result from strict compliance of the subdivision regulations. Due to the special circumstances affecting the petition site noted above, denial of the variance would constitute an undue hardship. These variances are in alignment with the approved area master plan. I'm going to go through the criteria separately for the request for a variance from 2180-300, lot depth for lot one. The first standard, we believe, appears to be met. Given the steep hillside topography, it is necessary to construct Glacier Valley at an angle to the hillside, and as a result, an irregularly shaped lot is created at the corner. Lot one is over half an acre and is adequate area to construct a home. There are many potential locations for a building on this lot. For standard number two, this standard also appears to be met. Given that the applicant meets the conditions of approval of the plat, the road and lot configuration on this plat will not be detrimental to public welfare. Concerns regarding adequate grade, clear vision area, and drainage will be addressed through the conditions of approval. For standard number three, we also think this appears to be met. The intent of the subdivision regulation is to provide for the orderly plating of property and efficient use of land. By allowing this variance, this property will become a buildable lot; otherwise, it would remain an unbuildable remnant lot. For standard number four, this also appears to be met. Due to the topography of the site, there is no other option for the road alignment. Without a variance, the petitioner would not be able to develop on this half-acre site that is otherwise developable. Undue hardship would result from the strict application of the subdivision regulations. The department recommends approval of the variances from 2180-200, legal and physical access for tracks one and track two, approval of a variance from 2180-330 for track two, and approval of a variance from 2180-300B, lot depth for lot one. The department also recommends approval of the plat for 18 months, subject to the conditions of approval one through 12 on page 18 through 21 of the staff report with the following Condition 5A, construction of Glacier Valley, should read, "Construction of Glacier Valley Way and Glacier Valley Circle to Girdwood Local Residential Standard, Street Standards", inserting, resolving the need to include, and then picking up again with what's written, "a five-foot detached pedestrian bike way," in accordance with AMC 2109-070F5. I would also like to remove condition of approval 7B. I would also like to remove condition of approval 7B. The other recommendations from the applicant in the memorandum, staff does not have a problem with. That is all.
Ms. Iverson, what you're saying then is you agree with all of the requests from Dalhke M. for the changes on 11884, right? They have changes to paragraph 2, 5A, 5B, 7B, 12A, and 12B?
That's correct.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Iverson on this plat? Okay, Ms. Pease?
Yes, through the chair. Ms. Iverson, I'm still trying to see how somebody would ski back to the neighborhoods from the slopes. And looking at, say, oh, any of the aerials, say, on page 28, or I guess page 44 would be good. If you could explain to me how you would ski off of the trails, which I understand to be in track 2, and you can sort of see those maintenance roads, I assume that's where people are coming down the hill, how would you get through the lots 13, 12, 11, 10 to get onto Verbier Way, ski back into the neighborhoods?
I would like to defer to the petitioner on that. I think that the master plan did have some, what looked like maybe ski-back trails within the subdivision, a little higher that might provide access to these lots. We left that as a private matter, that the petitioner would choose to provide those ski-back trails to provide access to those lots.
Okay, we'll ask the petitioner. That sounds good.
Any further questions for staff? Okay, we'll go ahead and move into the public hearing portion of this then. Again, the timing on this is 15 minutes for the petitioner, seven and a half minutes for representatives, and five minutes for individuals. And the same rules that applied the first time around also apply to this. So, Mr. Potter, if you'd go ahead and state your name for the record, and don't tear up our machinery.
Technical. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Tim Potter with Dalhke M. With me tonight is Randall Call, head counsel for Alieska Cirque Properties, and a variety of other support people in the audience to answer all the hard questions that Nancy's going to ask. Happy to be here tonight. As you can see by the volume of the area-wide master plan, and the kind of historic perspective of a couple of other master plans being done before this property was actually acquired from-- and the adjacent property to the north was acquired from the Heritage Land Bank. So, there's been a variety of master plans done since the mid-'80s till now. So, in front of you now is a primary area of development, and then residual area for future development, and a big chunk of it is for the ski hill, as the staff indicated. So, as you know, you start with the area master plan, and then the idea of the GRST 2 zoning district for the base area in new resort expansion was that you do an area-wide plan to try and take kind of the gross ideas and establish types of use, where the circulation, trails, drainage, and all that goes. And then you hone in when you start looking at more of a refined area or a smaller area where you can actually concentrate on the details, like topography, the soils, those types of things, and actually have an idea of what the development's going to be. As the staff indicated, from the area plan to what we're proposing tonight, the area that we're showing tonight as single-family lots really started out as multifamily condo-style development on a steep hillside with basically the same road alignment. In bringing SE Group, which does a lot of mountain master planning and detailed planning around the world, into the picture, and over the years, looking at this property for the next stage of development, it's become very clear that it would be very difficult to do kind of the right thing for the mountain in a multifamily condominium approach, layered on top of each other, and not have to cut the hillside apart. So, what the owner has done is directed the development to go as single-family development, except for creation of a lot for where the municipal water tanks are, Challenge Alaska, and one parcel adjacent to that, Lot 13. And with that, the single-family development, you're a bit more able to be a little bit kinder to the natural environment. There are rock-out croppings, there's steep areas, there's big trees, there's a variety of things. There's shallow water table coming down off the hill, running on the bedrock, which is very close to the surface. Lot of challenges to deal with, and it just didn't seem to do the mountain and the hillside justice to tear it apart to put more density there. So, with that in mind, that's basically the purpose of what we're doing here, recognizing that we've gone from a wholesale plan to now a more definitive plan, and then a plat that will actually implement that development. So, with that, you can see the area that's involved. The long flag that goes off of this property is actually all ski slope, and that is really one of the remnant parcels, track 2, that we're not going to have any direct vehicular access to in that vein. This drawing, although it's a little bit dark, does show you a little bit more detail about how the homes would be fit into the site, although I need to be very cautious and clarify that these lots are going to be extremely expensive, especially the ones on the ski-run frontage on Chair 3, the Christmas Run, and that we're anticipating that these owners will have their own architects and detailed design groups that will come in and put custom homes and/or lodges in these locations. One of the reasons that we've asked for the additional size of accessory dwelling unit is that we anticipate that some of these homes will have full-time live-in caretakers, and that they would need more space than up to 750 square feet, and that's why we've elevated it in this specific area to 1,200 square feet maximum. So, this basically generally establishes what we believe will occur here. And this plan actually does show how there are ski-back trails that are then allowed to go through from the Christmas Run on Chair 3 and come in at two or three different locations into the hillside, into the cul-de-sac, and then back down through the subdivision between a couple of the lots to get there. And that is then detailed in the Homeowners Association documents that are required for this development. So, that's kind of the layering of how those will occur. And we can talk about that in more detail, Ms. Pease, if you'd like. So, the subdivision really reflects what we've been working on. Let me see if I can come over here. So, as you can see, here is Verbier Way, which has been completed, and these are residential lots and what the commission saw a couple of years ago, two or three years ago, and has now been completed. Access would come up the hill to a cul-de-sac. This is the area where the existing maintenance building is, that you can see up on the hillside. As far as access up to the upper area, this tract up here, it's always been, even in the acquisition master plan that was done, the access came up through what was then proposed to be track C. There, what you'll find, as you get onto a mountainous hillside environment, access becomes kind of the limiting factor. And in this case, there's basically one place to put the road to get to the top of the hill and still maintain appropriate grades, slopes, cross slopes, drainage, and get up the hill. What the original master plans, and even the area master plan, did not include was a short connection from this road to the road up through track C that will then contact what is track 1 in our proposed subdivision. We did pretty extensive engineering and profiling of the topography in this location by AWW's water tank, and determined that it was possible to meet the turning radiuses for the design standards for a road, and make this connection come in, and still have adequate grades that are low grades so that people can stop their cars and actually get them started again. And there's really only one way to do that as well. So, this property will be, and always has been proposed, to be accessed from this area down here. And there's really only one place, based on our engineering studies, that have gotten progressively more detailed, to get that access up there. So, that one's a given as far as where that road goes. This access is very much the same. We've tried to utilize, for the most part, the underlying road that was already cut in to get access up to the maintenance facility, so we're not denuding any more of the site. One of the items that Ms. Pease asked about was the 20-foot setback. The buildings that will front and have their rear yards basically onto the Christmas Run of Chair 3, we're providing the lots limited and the ability to put the structures all the way out to that property line. The issue becomes the fire code and the ability to have openings in your building, like windows or doors, with it being on a lot line. So, the no-build easement is actually in the ski run, which we're not proposing to build any structures on anyway, and that will meet the fire code requirement so that you can have the structures there. So, it's a very specific, detailed approach to plating, and unfortunately, we don't have all the tools that we should have. So, that's a way to do and get to where we want to go, and asking for that no-build easement at that location. Just so that you are aware, there's an existing lease parcel that the municipality has at this location for the existing water tank. There is also a lot over here for a second large water tank facility, so that is already in store. So, one of the lots is for the existing water tank, and the rest of the ski run, that is out in the ski mountain, is also out here. And one of the conditions that I'll go back and revisit for a modification of the language had to do with entering into an agreement to extend sewer and water to all of the lots or tracks. We don't envision that AWW will need a water service or sewer service to their tank. We also don't believe that there needs to be a sewer or water service to the ski hill. The base facilities are fully served, and that will be adequate. So, again, here's the outline of the subdivision with north-up valley, looking up the hill. And you can see that that remnant parcel, track 2, actually spans a good portion of the ski hill and goes across the hill. This gives you a little bit better idea with 10-foot contours highlighted, with the road going up the hill and showing where the lots are, as proposed in the residential subdivision, and then Challenge Alaska here, and a future commercial development lot that would be down at the base facility by where the Nugget Inn used to be. Again, then, just the actual-- I've got north-up in this one, if you'd like to see it that way, so it's kind of comparable to the rest. That shows the actual boundaries and limits of the subdivision. Now, what I'd like to do is to try and walk through the proposed modifications to the conditions and recommendations by the staff, just so that everyone can understand what we're asking for. Appreciate the staff getting a chance to review those and comment on those during their presentation.
You've got 3 minutes and 57 seconds now.
Yeah, great. Okay, quickly on case G2, the top cluster of modifications that we're requesting are there, and that starts with 2A1. And that, again, was to just clarify, it's accessory rather than access. The next two were to really add that it's-- there's a difference, and we-- those conditions go directly to the residential lots, and the lots Challenge Alaska, and the retained GRST 2 commercial lot down at the base, Lot 13, are not encumbered by those residential lot conditions. On 3C, that really had to do with the circulation plan. And I just wanted to clarify that, as the staffs indicated, that on the north boundary of the subdivision, there is a 30-foot trail easement that goes from where the existing, or the Winter Creek alignment used to be, down to Verbier Way. What they're not aware of, and that I'll present tonight, is that the Winter Creek Trail has been reworked through track F, the open-space tract, and then cuts across the corner of this proposed subdivision and ties in directly to the separated trail on Verbier. And we will provide an easement for that newly relocated trail. So, it is completed. So, that's why I indicated in an Albig built condition, because it actually has been relocated slightly. Prior to the issuance of a land use permit, this is just to clarify from a drainage standpoint, for the grading plans and that, that those be done prior to the issuance of a permit. And then again, the resolution of the road standards for a separated trail. It's very significant when you start looking at cutting into a hillside, that when you add a separation area and then an additional five-to-eight-foot separated trail, the amount of material that you have to move and cut out of the slope with a two-to-one slope basically tears the hillside apart. And what we're attempting to do is provide appropriate levels of access and pedestrian circulation, as well as maintain as much of the hillside as we possibly can. And it seems like a little bit of overdue for basically a 12-lot residential subdivision with a dozen houses in it to have a huge cut with a separated trail when we've got trails servicing the entire hill. Going over to the master plan, development master plan, I believe that the staff has indicated that they've accepted our recommendations. I would be happy to address any of those and retain any other time for rebuttal.
Okay, are there questions for Mr. Potter? Mr. Wilson?
Mr. Potter, the master plan on page 71 shows a different track 2 layout. Of course, the design of that facility up there hasn't been finalized, I realize that, but--
Okay, I'm looking for-- that must be in case G2?
G2, page 71.
Okay, case packet. And your question is?
The layout of the hotel, or was it a condo or hotel?
Lodge, hotel, niche boutique, lodge, whatever you want to try and refer to it as. This was SE Group's with our involvement, best guess, along with the owner, of what a reasonable, purposeful use would be. That site has views down to Turning Arm and up the Glacier Creek Valley to the glaciers. It's just a fantastic site and deserves to be developed with something world-class. I hate using that term, but this one really is. There have been no specifics done as far as designing beyond this level. It is out there in a master plan form that other parties have looked at. There has been some interest expressed, but there's nothing ready to go yet. And it will have to come in to the Planning and Zoning Commission prior to going forward.
Second question was, you mentioned that what we can't see is the way the trail has been relocated through the open space area. Could you show us on one of the--
Could you show us on one of these aerials what you're referring to?
I think what I'll do is go ahead and maybe pass this groin around because as you can maybe not see from there, but there is, if you go out in the terrain, there's already a little pedestrian trail that comes right in along this property line, and that's why it was chosen, that just parallels and runs with the topo. So you can ski right in off the ski trail, right into the cul-de-sac to get into your house here. Then we have ski back trails as well here so that you can ski down. This is rather flat and then comes up the hill, so you can ski in this way, you can ski out that way going downhill with a grade. And then at this corner, we've got allowances for skiing between these units down to get down to this lower face of the road. So that's how we've incorporated that in there as well. On this plan, on a slightly grander scale from the ski runs up here with this being Chair 7, the existing hotel down at this location, that you can, you'll be able to turn down here and ski down the slope. When the road up Track C gets developed, there'll be a tunnel that the ski trail will go through, and you'll be able to ski back down to this development and turn and go onto Verbiere Way, onto the pedestrian trail that's there, and service all of these homes and this adjacent neighborhood. So we've attempted to fully service the residential here, getting into this neighborhood, future development here, and obviously you can ski back to all of this area.
And those will be trail easements then?
Yes. And what we've done is, this is required to have a homeowners association, what has been set up, and there is a large overall project homeowners association, and then each development has its own subunit. And within that, there are descriptions of where the easements go and where there have to be areas left open for those ski back trails to go through different lots. And that's how we're showing it, plus we'll have the site plan, the master development plan that will also show that.
Snowboarders will appreciate that.
So where it really gets caught in a safety net is the buyer who's spending a million bucks for more on a lot to make sure that that happens. But in reality, when the land use permit gets submitted for one of these houses to be constructed, it then gets compared against the plat and the development master plan to assure that those things have been taken into account.
Thank you. Ms. Pease?
Yes, to follow up on that, Mr. Potter, you said the individual land use permit would be compared against the plat, but at the scale we have, the preliminary plat, we don't see those ski back trails that you just described. So what plat are those on, or how do we know those are on a plat? Okay, now I see them, but they're not on the plat we have. So that's a zoning map. How do we incorporate it, make sure that these are provided or guaranteed? Is there a reason they're not on the plat?
There is a reason that they're not on the plat, and that's because the specific building locations on those lots have not been selected yet. There are allowances for that to occur. The two that join up to Chair 3's Christmas run, we could actually show on the plat and then work the rest of them through the homeowners association and details when the site plans come in.
Could you provide a plat note that acknowledges that they'll be there? I mean, I would just, I would like some way to capture it so that whoever reviews this plat makes sure they're included.
I would further probably suggest that there is a requirement that's in the staff's recommendations that talks about prior to the land use permit being issued, that you have to have the Architectural Control Committee sign off. What you may want to do is add on to that condition that the Architectural Control Committee also has to address the identification and location of ski back trails.
Great. One more question, access if I may. There's no indication what commercial use might occur on Lot 13, but what's the grade like at that corner, and is there any access concern? I have no idea what the traffic might be to that location.
That's actually the flattest piece of ground down there. If you remember where the Nugget Inn was that got knocked down, so the sits mark, it sits a little bit higher and grades a little bit uphill towards Crystal Mountain and Verbiere. I would say it's probably got a 5% or less slope going from north to south towards the sits mark.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, for Girdwood and at the ski area, it's as flat as it comes.
Right. And one more question, noticed that the Girdwood Board of Supervisors, I think it was, didn't comment. Did they have a chance, they meet this summer and get to see it?
We met with the land use committee, so what we try and do is meet with the land use committee first and then go to the Girdwood Board of Supervisors following that because it's really the land use committee that's been designated, the body that looks at all of these in detail. The only concern or comment that came out of either the land use committee or the Board of Supervisors was to make sure that the drainage was coordinated at the bottom of the ski hill as it comes in here and this corner of Crystal Mountain and Verbiere. In the past, there's been a history of undersizing of pipes and that as a result of the last subdivision that you approved, the Verbiere lots. The drainage, there was an area-wide drainage plan done where our hydrologist went and identified all the different sub-drainage areas in the entire resort area and then calculated what the flows would be and how big the pipes would have to be downstream. As a result of that, when Verbiere was built and Crystal Mountain was rebuilt, there's actually been upsized culverts put in. And the only issue that's come about to date is that there, in the first couple of storms that were handled, that there was debris that came down from everybody's lots and the hillside, so there were sticks and everything else in there. Aliaska was contacted by the city. They went out and their own staff cleaned out the culverts, and to my knowledge, there hasn't been any issues since. But we are working with, and I know that Don Kiefer's in the back, we're organizing and working with PMNEA at the city because the drainage has been one of the biggest issues. You've got a mountain, you've got shallow soils, you've got a lot of snow, and you get a lot of rain on top of snow sometimes, and it runs downhill. And that is an area that the community had had problems with in the past. We believe that they've been addressed with the upsizing of the pipes as a result of the previous work, but that is a focal point that we'll be working with PMNEA on. That was the limit of their concern.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Potter? Okay, Mr. Potter, I just have one question for you. Based on this memorandum that you gave us, Item 5 under Case 2011-095, do you want that added to the verbiage that's already there on Page 21 on Paragraph 5? Do you just add it to it, or does it replace it?
It could be replaced.
Replaced?
Yeah.
Okay. Any further questions for Mr. Potter? Okay, you've got 37 seconds for rebuttal.
Perfect.
Okay, is there anybody else that would wish to testify? Come forward, please state your name and indicate whether you're representing a group or yourself, so I know how much time to give you.
I'm Vernon Brown, and I'm a property owner of a building that shows up on the plat, and I have some questions.
Okay, you've got five minutes then, sir.
If you look at 71, the overview, and find Challenge Alaska, what size height restriction is that building that's being built right in front of me? I'm the one right below it, that Aliaska North. That'd be Lot 13, I believe.
Mr. Potter, you can go ahead and answer that, you know it better than we do.
Answer the question. That is zone GRST 2 and has the ability to go up to 75 feet, but has to come back to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a development review prior to any development.
Okay, thank you.
I bet it's a beautiful thing. Can't wait till I see it. Also, in that same lot, there's, you guys discussed the drainage problem. There's water that runs from the corner of their building down that runs year-round in there. We've mentioned before our real concern about the drainage down against our building that would be just to the west of it. There's flooding. We've had to ditch alongside our building, put in French drain and everything, and have a real concern with that structure and that and with the water and that when they do it, build it there. I know it's going to be all engineered, but there's water that runs through there. There's a creek right there that runs off the corner of their building. And I hope there's no variances given so they can crowd up against our property line or anything for that structure. And this is the structure that it doesn't look like it here, but it's very intrusive on the beginner ski level. We discussed it before. You mentioned Christmas run that comes down there. If you see where the chair is, Challenge Alaska, all beginning skiers, everybody else, you lose just about 30% to 40% of the mountain, beginner ski mountain, by putting that building The parking is a big problem. I don't know if they're going to have underground parking or if they build it up. They'd probably need two to three levels for parking for that structure because you're not going to, if you build it underground, you're going to have a river going through I guess those are my biggest concerns, and not just because I'm personally one of the owners in that condo, but it wasn't the most exciting day when we saw this overview. Like what they're doing to the mountain, all the hard work they're putting in, but there needs to be, I think, some consideration for traffic in there. I don't know how it's going to get around. There's a traffic problem with that one little building there now, and parking's a problem with that building. So they're going to have to provide, you know, definitely all of their own parking Appreciate the time, and I think that's my biggest concerns.
Thank you. Sir, any questions for Mr. Brown? Ms. Pease?
Yes, through the chair. Mr. Brown, the part, I just want to make sure I followed correctly. The parking you're concerned about is the current parking for Challenge Alaska on Lot 12, is that right?
No.
And future parking on Lot 13, or which?
Both, 12, 13, as well as Aliaska North, which is the facility that we, I own a condo in now. There's a problem parking there already. We have a problem with parking, and we have a structure that's probably five or six times the size of ours with people going in there and want to make sure that they have per-code adequate parking for there, and that's just going to do nothing but put the height of the building up, and I hate to even see a 75-foot structure in that area.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Brown? Okay, sir, do you have anything else? Because you do have a minute left if you want to say anything else.
No, I'm just glad I'm getting old enough that I probably won't be skiing down there much anymore.
Thank you for your testimony, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to testify? Please state your name and indicate whether you're representing a group or whether you're speaking for yourself.
My name's Barbara Norris. I'm speaking for myself.
You have five minutes, ma'am.
I own a condo in Aliaska East, which in common parlance is the bake shop building that faces on the ski slope. So that's a little bit over from this, and it's sort of hard to absorb either from what's available on the internet or suddenly getting these zillion-page documents exactly what's going on here. But it's a little alarming when you see a zoning notice where one arm of GRST 2 seems to stretch across the entire slope, and you wonder if their future plans involve expanding, you know, condo, million-dollar condo or home lot sales across the face of the entire ski slope with maybe a tunnel for people to ski through. They have said today that they're not expanding south and that they're going to retain the rest of this area as ski slope, but I don't understand these drawings well enough to know if that's just something they're saying or that's something that they're guaranteeing. Because I don't think we should see the entire bottom of the ski slope turned into lots for sale. There's not that much level or beginning area at the bottom of the slope as it is. When they came out with their last part of the plan, although they haven't implemented this yet, they seem to be talking about knocking down the sits mark and extending a ski lift down so that the base of that lift is essentially in the middle of the parking area where people park if they're going to go to the bake shop. And that is the parking area for the Aliaska East condos, I think some of the north condos, and, you know, that whole set of building, of commercial spots along where the bake shop is. And so if you put the base of this ski slope, ski lift there surrounded by skiers skiing to it, I don't know where they're moving all those cars to. I don't know where there is any new parking being created to replace the parking that was eliminated by this plan to extend that ski lift and use up half the parking space that exists now below the bake shop. And now they're talking about this Lot 13 and possibly a 300-unit hotel, and I see no planning in this plan for parking to accommodate the, anything other than the single-family residences, which presumably would have parking on each lot for that person's car. But before all the land is used up being sold for nice ski people's houses, some land has to be set aside for parking for the uses that they're talking about in terms of commercial uses. And, I mean, Lot 13 is certainly not large enough to have a hotel or a big lodge or something and parking. And as was pointed out, you can't really have underground parking in a place where even a small angle is just an icy water-filled slope in Girdwood. And I don't know where you're going to put above-ground parking to create all this. So, you know, I don't know whether half a dozen of these lots don't need to be used for parking alone just to accommodate the future plans of putting in this hotel or something. I mean, how much parking is there over at the Prince that's now not called the Prince anymore? I mean, acres. And how much of a parking problem is there at the resort already? Pretty big problem. So I think that really ought to be thought about in terms of the bigger plan here, and I don't think we should... And I don't think we should, we should agree to anything that allows sort of an arm of development to sort of come across the face of the slope so that they can create a whole new layer of, well, now you're really at the foot of the slope. Because there's already a foot of the slope. And those places have had their existence in view of the slope for years. And once you go further up, there's nothing level.
Okay, any questions for Ms. Norris? No questions. Thank you, ma'am, for your testimony. Anybody else wish to testify? Please state your name and indicate whether you're an individual or representing a group.
Mike Horrigan with an H, and I'm an individual.
Okay, you have five minutes, sir.
Thank you. I've been an avid skier at Aliaska for probably 12, 13 years now. My children ski, frequently season pass holders. We've been very happy with a lot of the upgrades that the new ownership has provided at the resort. I am a little concerned with this development plan, mainly the development of a hotel or a lodge, whatever it is, and I believe it's Site 13 at the base of the mountain, but the base of Chair 3. I think there's a couple of things that we spoke about in the past. One of them was the, the lack of beginner ski terrain. And when I look at both of the lodges that they're looking at building, the one at the top of the, top of Chair 3 by Chair 7, and then the other one at the base of Chair 3, I think you're taking away a lot of that beginner terrain that, that my children are, you know, can ski well enough now, but when they started skiing, that was where they learned how to ski. And I think it's really important to maintain that aspect within the resort. In addition to that, I do agree with, you know, the statements that we've heard about water drainage. I know that this past year in the Aliaska North building that there has, we still had water issues even though that they did do the improvements at the corner there of Verbier Way. And parking, as it was very eloquently stated by the last speaker, I, I just don't quite understand if you're going to stick a big building there, where are you going to put all those cars? I mean, currently, if you look below Aliaska East, below the bake shop, that seems to be where most of the people, not most of the people, but a lot of the people at the resort park, the people who have passes that are showing up, especially people with children, that's where they're going to go and they're going to park and they're going to walk right up to Chair 3 and start skiing. If you stick a big building in the, right in that area, you're going to take away parking from the bake shop, you're going to take away parking from the people in Aliaska East, the people in Aliaska North. If you develop that road up to the left over towards Verbier Way, I think you're also going to lose some of the existing parking that is available for Challenge and for the staff at Challenge and for the people in the Aliaska North building that park on that side of the building. So to me, I have a lot of concerns and I just wanted to share them with you. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Horrigan? Thank you, sir. Anybody else wish to testify? Anybody else that wishes to testify? Okay, Mr. Potter, you've got about 37 seconds or something for rebuttal?
And--
Wait a minute, she'll figure it out here, just a minute. 37.
And 37 seconds are less. I, I think the, the big thing from a rebuttal standpoint is to, again, clarify that nothing is being proposed with and/or on Lot 13. It is a piece of property that was looked at carefully to make sure that it did not encroach into the beginner ski slopes at the base of the hill. And I'll just let everybody know that there, there is no plan, there is no hotel plan. It will obviously be driven by the amount of parking that can be located there. And just a cautionary note that what you see on the ground, like most everything else in Girdwood, isn't exactly what the legal boundaries are. So, and just to clarify that, that at least the north condo, if you went down there and looked at that, and, and I could bet all of you money to where you think the lot line is, and it, and I'd win, because it's taken me a lot of years to figure out where the property lines are. And everybody is supposed to have their own parking as a requirement of the code. And obviously, anything that comes forward on Lot 13 will have to come back in front of you for a, a development master plan for that specific lot and a site plan review. And at that point in time, everybody will know what it is. And just because it is GRST 2 zoning, it does have allowances that were always looked at in, when the code was done and the master plan for the Girdwood Area Plan was done. But it will be a result of that specific property, how big it is, how much parking it can go on it and, and how it sits. And right now, I couldn't even begin to guess what's going to go there. So there will be another time.
Okay, Ms. Pease?
Yeah, through the chair, a lot of the parking issues we heard were not on this site that we're looking at. But just sort of for general information, is there a parking master plan, the way there has been sort of coordinated parking down at the Mercantile area? Is there, is there any kind of, is the resort party to a parking resolution of any kind?
Um, no. What I, what I can help clarify is that at one point, the base of Chair 3 was relocated. There was a plan to extend that further down the slope and create, again, some more bunny slope area down to the base of Chair 3. That has been held back and Randall can, can nod if I'm, or kick me, but I don't believe that that will be entertained and be brought forward as far as pushing that further down the hill. As far as I know, the only really organized outside of the downtown town center, new Girdwood town site, actual parking planning that's really ever been done is what Aliaska has done with the day lodge and its associated parking and with the hotel and its associated parking and the larger separated parking lot, which is down in the Moose Meadow area and that originally had about 800 parking spaces in it. And that was for not support of the hotel, but that was to try and split up the skiers so that there wasn't such a glut of skiers trying to get on the lifts by the day lodge. And that would spread everybody out and be able to get more terrain available to more people in a, in a faster time. Randall is just confirming that and telling me to go ahead and mention that. In fact, the legislature did authorize money in this last go-around and we're hopeful that the governor is not going to do anything, and he's indicated that he won't, to do the extension of Auerlberg Road out so that it can provide access to the new Nordic Ski Loop that was developed. And in that vein, Aliaska is looking at developing a new parking facility out to the north of the existing tram facility in the hotel so that now there'll be even more parking proximate to the tram so that you can get even a further spread of the users and more skier access directly to the uphill lift capacity. So that should help things as well. Historically, where the bake shop parking is, it's been modified. It used to be that you parked side by side going down the hill, except in those days where you got rain on ice, all the, all the cars migrated downhill. And then you had to wait for the first, the guy at the bottom's car, that person had to show up to leave so the next person could get in their car because they'd literally be packed together. So parking's been an issue. The city's never, to my knowledge, done a parking master plan. And the speakers tonight were right, it is kind of a free-for-all. Not all of the condominiums buildings have parking that are, that's currently being utilized on their lot. There's some parking that's on Wright of Way that was dedicated a long time ago that was to be for a drainage easement. Some people's houses aren't even where they think they are in Girdwood. So I'll end with that.
Any, any further questions for Mr. Potter? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any questions for staff before I close public hearing? Public hearing is closed. The matter rests with the commission. Little bit of administrative stuff, I anticipate that we're going to have to deal with Case 2011-095 first and then deal with the plat. And I think we're going to have to deal with the plat in about four separate motions because I think we're going to have to approve the, the variances first because there's three variances in the plat and then we'll deal with the actual plat itself. So we're going to be doing at least five, five motions here as we deal with this thing. So I'd like to get a positive motion for approval of 2011-095 first. Ms. Pease has made a motion. Do we have a second? Mr. Parks is second. Ms. Pease, would you please state your motion?
In the matter of 2011-095, I move for approval with the department's recommendations on pages 19 through 21 with the conditions or changes provided to us by the petitioner to 2A1, 2AB, 2B3, 3C, 4, and 5. Those have also been approved by staff. And I believe the change to condition 5 is to substitute the language, to substitute, so the language would be resolved with MOA planning, traffic, and PME, the need to construct the roads within the residential area to meet the local residential street standards identified in AMC as listed with a separate path bikeway. And that replaces the original.
Okay, Mr. Parks, is that fine with you as a second? Okay, Ms. Pease, you want to speak to your motion?
Yes. This rezone is generally consistent with the, sorry, it's not a rezone, it's development master plan approval. It has a waiver of grading plan, floor plans, and building elevations and renderings because this tract is very physically challenging with steep grades, shallow bedrock, shallow runoff, and therefore it is more environmentally sensitive and practical to be developed, to develop it as single-family lots with a couple of commercial or institutional lots rather than the originally envisioned multifamily condo-type units. Because the lots will be developed individually, the standards of the Girdwood Chapter 9 of Title 21 can be applied through individual site plan reviews and, rather than an overall master plan. So the intent or the, the conditions and the character of the master plan will still be applied with the exception of a couple of variances, just on an individual lot basis. And as, as for the, the variances, the variances such as the building height limit--
That's the next case. We'll, we'll deal with that at that time. Is there anything else that you wish to say on the master plan?
No, actually, but this case does, I believe, the conditions do include those modifications to yard setbacks and building heights.
Right. Ms. O'Brien, you've got, you came up.
Mr. Chair, Ms. Pease was, I believe you were talking, addressing the amendments to the code that are not necessarily variances, but they are allowed to be amended within the, within a master plan development.
Thank you for that correction. I may need further help on this.
Yeah, yeah. They, there were some amendments in there to the code, but they weren't variances. So go ahead and continue your line of discussion there.
The amendments are to, you have detached single-family structures rather than attached condominium units. And as I spoke to in my findings, that is appropriate given the physical challenges of the site. And the circulation and parking will include a connection via Glacier Valley Way to the Tract C Road that avoids an excessively long cul-de-sac. And the circulation and parking will also reflect the fact that Winter Creek Trail has been relocated. It now crosses the corner of this tract and we've added language that the tract will be as built in the field if it's not exactly along the property line. And finally, the master drainage plan will be amended to reflect better detail of drainage ways and streams and wetlands. And there have been some improvements just outside, or at the Verbier corner of this property. Those will also be noted.
Anything else, Ms. Pease?
Just that, in general, these types or developments in Girdwood get pretty good scrutiny from the community. We did have testimony here tonight. A lot of it dealt with parking. Some of the parking was off-site. We do appreciate that commentary, but can't deal with that on this site. As for the parking on this site, the areas that have commercial activity will be required to have a development master plan approval and a site plan. So parking will be addressed at that time. And the Girdwood Board of Supervisors Land Use Committee did review this plan and did not submit written comments. And again, Girdwood as a community has a reputation for scrutinizing these plans very closely, so the fact that there wasn't adverse comment from the Land Use Committee speaks to the presumed acceptability of the, the plan.
Any commissioners have any, Mr. Wilson?
I just wanted to make note of the applicant's representative's discussion of the ski-back approach that is to be taken and will be formalized in a later, at a, at a later point, but it'll come back to this, this commission.
Any further comments from commissioners? Is there any objection? That passes. Okay, let's move on now to the actual variances and the plat. As I indicated before, we'll have to deal with the variances first. And there's three variances listed on page 17, A, B, and C. So we'll treat each one of those as a separate approval. So we need a positive motion on Item A, approval of variance from AMC 218200, legal and physical access for tracks 1 and 2. And it's been moved by, I guess, Ms. Pease, seconded by Mr. Parks. Would you please state your motion, Ms. Pease?
Yes, and I'll preface it by saying, given the complexity of the multiple parts, I will gladly take guidance from staff if needed. But in the matter of plat S11884-1, I move for approval with the department, oh, Department Recommendation A-- Department Recommendation A, which regards the legal and physical access for track one
Ms. Pease, you mean that not approval of the plat, but approval of the variance, right?
Yes. My understanding was that you wanted me to take each of the variances and then the plat? Is that correct?
Right, and we'll do the variances first.
Okay, so I'm moving for approval of the first variance, which is Department Recommendation A on page seventeen.
Okay. Secretary's got it straight now.
And speaking to that, we heard testimony that track one is really only physically accessible through the future extension of a road through Track C connecting it to Arleberg. And track two, we heard testimony that this will be, is, and will continue to be part of the ski slopes with no development planned, and therefore, this variance makes sense, given the constraints of the terrain and the intended uses of these parcels.
What we'll do is we'll vote on this first, and Ms. Pease, I'll ask for some findings in each case, but we'll go ahead and get it approved first, and then we'll do the findings.
All right.
Okay, is there any further comments on the first variance, A? Any discussion? Any objection? Okay, the variance is approved. Okay, let's move on to variance B. Ms. Pease?
I move for approval of the variance under Department Recommendation B, which is regards lot frontage for track two.
Okay, it's been seconded by Mr. Wilson, and you want to speak to that, please?
Track two is, according to the petitioner, intended to be and continue to be ski slopes and accessed by trails, therefore, it does not need frontage.
Okay, is there any further comments from commissioners? Any objection? Variance B is approved. Please move on to C, Ms. Pease.
I move for approval of Department Recommendation C, which is a variance regarding lot depth for lot one.
Okay, please use your machine to make the motion. And is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Wilson, you want to speak to that, please?
Yes. Lot one has a variance on the depth of the lot because of the terrain, which causes the switchback configuration of Glacier Valley Way. It's too steep to run the road up the hill, and therefore, a sliver or a narrow lot is created, which is lot one.
Okay, any comments from commissioners? Any objection? That is approved. Okay, now, let's move on to the actual plat itself, and as I said, then we'll come back and do findings on everything. Okay, Ms. Pease?
Yes, I move for approval of the plat for eighteen months, subject to all the conditions on page eighteen and nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one, with the following changes. We received a list of changes from the petitioner, which were supported by staff regarding the languages, items two, five A, five B, seven B, twelve A, and twelve B. In addition, per staff recommendation, eliminate seven B, which was a requirement for a SWPPP plan prior to notice to proceed, and in addition, add to the plat notes under eleven B, which requires review by the Muni Planning Division and the Alieska Resort Architectural Review Committee. Add to that paragraph another sentence at the end, which says, "The committee will approve the locations of ski-back trails to allow direct access from slopes to residences and the Verbiere Trail, and these will be shown on site plans."
It's been seconded by Mr. Wilson. Ms. Pease, you want to speak to your motion, please?
The plat attempts to make the most sensitive and practical use of the terrain and incorporates the existing institutional uses of Challenge Alaska and the water tanks. It provides road connectivity to the future road through Track C. It reserves a good deal of the acreage, sixty-seven acres, in an undeveloped state for ski route, ski runs, and it continues the proposed the intended use of a development of a hotel or lodge on track one. So, it continues to promote the resort development, which is the economic engine of Alieska in keeping with the master plan, but as envisioned with the master plan, once the actual tracts come forward for development, there will be some changes. And so, this is appropriate use of the property in keeping with the resort master plan and the Girdwood plan.
Any further comments from commissioners? Is there any objection? That passes. Now, let's go do some findings.
Okay, this will be somewhat a repeat.
Yes.
But you want these. Okay. With regard to the variance for legal and physical access for track one and track two, it has been demonstrated through the engineering studies of the applicant that there is no practical access from Glacier Valley Way to track one for potential hotel development. And there is and has been on the master plan an intended road access through track C. So, although that's not platted, there is ample evidence that it will be provided from the north. And with regard to track two, it is well-established as a area of ski runs, and the access is via chairlift. It's skier access, and therefore, road frontage is not needed through this tract. Findings for, I guess, anyone else? Shall I go ahead to track?
Go ahead.
With regard to the lot need for lot frontage for track two, same reasons just stated, track two is established as an area of ski runs. The developers or the applicants intend to have stated their intent that it will remain as ski runs, and therefore, vehicular access is not needed through this tract. The variance under track C, lot depth on lot one, an irregular-shaped lot is appropriate to make to allow this lot to be developed. The irregular shape is necessitated by the angle of the road on very steep slopes. And with regard to the plat, this is the next level of detail provided after the master plan. This is the step-down planning envisioned under the Alieska master plan, and in it we see that the development has been designed to fit as best as possible on challenging terrain with steep slopes, shallow bedrock, and considerable amount of runoff. The plat that we have approved requires additional drainage easements. It requires groundwater analysis of the area and a sediment and erosion control plan, so those issues will be addressed further. In addition, there will be site plans when each lot comes forward for development. They'll undergo review by the Alieska Resort Architectural Review Committee and the Muni's Planning Division. We've specified that these reviews need to include what are called ski-back trails because access from the slopes to residences is an important part of the resort community's character. And the plat also ensures circulation through connectivity to the future road on track C, and it acknowledges the location of the Winter Creek Trail and along Verbiere Way and then across the corner of this property.
Thank you.
For these reasons, this project conforms with the Girdwood plan and with the Alieska master development plan, and I will be supporting it.
Okay, we've already supported it and voted on it. So, I just wanted to get these findings on the record. Yeah, I've got some additional findings here, too, that basically, in regards to the variance that the standards are met because there are special circumstances or conditions affecting the property that strict application, it would not be practical. And these variances are not detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to other property owners, and it will not have an effect of nullifying the intent and purpose of the subdivision regulations of the comprehensive plan. And undue hardship would be placed on strict compliance with these regulations. So, for these reasons also, I find that the variances are appropriate. Okay, we've already approved all of these things. What I'd like to do now is take about a five-minute break, and then we'll get right back, and we'll finish up the Transportation CIP. So, we'll take about a five-minute break. The Planning Zoning Commission for September 12, 2011, Municipality of Anchorage, back to order, and we'll move on to the final item on our public hearing agenda. It's the case 2011-099, Municipality of Anchorage. It's the AMATS Amendment to the Transportation Improvement Program. So, if we could hear from staff, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick refresher for some of those members who may not have or may not be as familiar with AMATS. We're the federally recognized planning organization for the Municipality of Anchorage, and we this organization helps decide how to spend a certain allocation of the federal transportation dollars that come into the city. And your role is to act as the AMATS Citizens Advisory Committee to give a sense of what the citizenry of Anchorage might want to do on this. So, this particular amendment that's before you is actually only includes two projects. The rest of it is the same as the last time you saw it, but there are two projects that are included in here, which are intelligent transportation systems projects, which, if you look at your amendment, you'll see that they could be dynamic message board signs, real-time traffic counters, highway advisory radio, all sorts of different things that basically easiest way of saying it is using computers or some sort of technology to try to make congestion less or to make air quality better or improve travel times or all that sort of stuff. So, these two projects are not part of the allocation that AMATS decides how to spend. They are projects that are part of DOT's set of projects, and there's one on the Glen Highway kind of corridor and one on the Seward and Parks or one on the Glen and Parks corridor and one on the Seward Highway corridor. So, they're just small projects, but because they're new, we have to do a major amendment. So, that's what's before you today, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. I did pass around a sheet that Commissioner Pease had forwarded some questions on, and I answered those. There's a single sheet that has the red ink combined with the, I'm going to call that black ink, might be blue ink, but that answered those tried to answer those questions that she asked, but I'll be happy to answer any other questions that might come up or clarify some of these.
Yeah, Ms. Pease?
My copy also has red ink on the Table Seven Transit Program funding. Could you speak to that?
Those changes Sorry, through the chair, Commissioner Pease, those changes are they're just minor changes, dollar figures moved around between the two tables. It would normally be a what's called an administrative modification that would only have to be approved by the AMATS Policy Committee, but in this case, we tack them on to this to let it to get that change included. There were just some dollars that got moved between the two projects. The dollar figures at the end stay the same. This is part of the municipality's federal transit administration money. It's not part of the AMATS allocation, so again, it's not part of what AMATS decides the allocation of, but those were minor changes that got moved around. So, the main reason we did a major amendment was those two projects that got added in.
So, basically, this whole change is items fourteen and fifteen on Table Eight.
That is correct, Mr. Chair. Those are two new projects. They're relatively small in the realm of AMATS, but they're new, so they have to be a major amendment.
And they're being paid for by the feds?
These are federal dollars, and therefore, they're dollars that are can only go to national highway system projects, which in this case, Seward Highway, the Glen Highway, Parks Highway.
Okay, Mr. Wilson?
Yes. The I'm very happy to see the IT improvements proposed here. Speaking as a citizen, I was waiting for about four hours on one of the fatal accidents down toward Cooper Landing and one time, and turned around and came back ultimately that night and went back the next day, only to find another one. And coming back, we ran into a third accident, I think it was, and that was closer to Anchorage in the section that you're talking about here, Seward Turnigan section. And we looked as we came finally got through and came to Potter's Marsh, looked back at the sign, the big sign with all light of pretty colors lighted up, and nothing was said on the sign about the what was a four-hour wait, even after it was three hours later, and there was still a wait. So, So I'm speaking as a citizen here. I wait. And I want to congratulate you on, that's one of the improvements, I gather, to link in that system and to have it manned so that, 24 hours, so that a trooper can input it or something. And that the troopers are given knowledge that it's there, and they should advise people. We were asking troopers what was going on, and we couldn't get an answer. So something on a formal lighting system would be great. The other question I had was anti-icing and de-icing system? What automated anti-icing and de-icing?
Through the Chair, Mr. Wilson. I have seen these in trade publications. There are sensors on, typically, they're on bridges, because those ice first. But there are sensors there that can, you know, based on the ambient temperature and other things of that nature, can tell if there's icing there. And then they have, you know, different devices there that either spray a, some sort of coating on there that is a de-icing agent or something of that nature. I haven't seen them utilized up here yet, but that's something that they're looking at, I guess.
Built into the bridge?
Built into the bridge, yeah. Sensors there with, you know, the containers of some kind of fluid that sprays out there if they detect some sort of icing.
And what's CCTV going to do?
You know, I'm not exactly certain what they would be using that for unless it's for some security issues. Not certain, maybe to, you know, similar to using a traffic camera in town here to detect if there's congestion or something.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments, Mr. Lance? Okay, now, you need basically a recommendation for approval from us to go forward?
Mr. Chair, that's what we would like tonight, yeah.
Okay. And any further comments or questions?
I just want to clarify. The only thing we're being asked to approve, basically, is the amendments to the tip. Is that correct?
Through the Chair, Commissioner Pease. Everything else has already been, has gone through this committee when we had this creature before you the last time. So those changes in Table 7, the transit ones that you noted with the moving of the dollar figures around, and the two new projects, those would be the two things we're asking you to approve, the whole amendment there.
Okay. So basically, you're just asking us to approve 14 and 15? And then there's that other one that had the real minor amount of funding changes? Or does that matter?
Well, it's, Mr. Chair, it's all part of the same amendment.
Oh, okay.
But those dollar figures, if we didn't have the two other big, you know, the two other projects that were added in, it would be a, what's called an administrative modification. And that can just get approved by the Policy Committee. There's no federal requirement for a public hearing and 30-day release and all that sort of stuff.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Wilson?
Just a quick question. What's the next time we'll be asked to take a look at the AMATS program?
Through the Chair, Commissioner Wilson. We look at this, the tip every year to determine whether or not we need to make funding changes between committees, I mean, between projects. You know, if there, someone, if DOT determines that we need $1 million more for a certain project or we don't need as much money for a certain project, we look to balance this creature at least once a year. We don't always need to do it, but we look every year to determine whether we have a big change like this. Other than that, the next time we would look for an approval would be in the 2013 timeframe, when we would be adopting the next tip, which would be the 2014 through 2017 tip.
Will we be getting an overview of the whole program at some point? Or is that necessary? Does anybody else think that's appropriate? This is the road program.
Yeah.
Big picture.
I'll take a stab at that. But, Mr., through the Chair, we have done kind of an AMATS 101 in the past. And I'm happy to do that at any point. I could do that for the whole commission or I could do that individually, however you'd like to do it. We could do it in a workshop. I'd be happy to do that anytime, whatever works for the commission.
The thing is, we're not sitting right now as the Planning, Zoning Commission. We're sitting as the AMATS Citizen Advisory Committee. So that's, it's sort of a little different hat that we wear. And we're designated because we're the only people that can kind of hold a public hearing, and everybody shows up if they want to say something.
No, I just wanted to raise, while we're on the topic. We don't talk about AMATS, but.
Okay, what I'm going to do right now is I'm going to open the public hearing. And the rules for the public hearing are as follows. Petitioner has 10 minutes. And basically, the petitioner is the staff tonight. Representative groups, community council and so forth have five minutes, and individuals have three minutes to speak. So I'm now opening the public hearing for case 2011-099, AMATS Amendment to the Transportation Improvement Program. Is there anybody that wishes to testify? Is there anybody that wishes to testify? Apparently, no one wishes to testify, so the public hearing is closed, and the matter rests with the AMATS Citizen Advisory Committee. And I'll take a positive motion for recommendation for approval. It's been moved by Mr. Wilson, seconded by Mr. Parks. Mr. Wilson, would you make, please state your motion? And please use your mic.
In the matter of case number 2011-099, AMATS Amendment to the Transportation Improvement Plan, I move that we approve the amendments as proposed on Pages 11 and 12 of the handout.
It's been seconded by Mr. Parks. Is there any further comments or discussions? Is there any objection? That approves, passes unanimously. Okay, a couple of things. We've got a bunch of stuff happening this month. We're going to have that tour on the 22nd, which is a Thursday. And we're supposed to meet, I believe, over here, in the parking lot, right here. And they'll have a van, and we'll go there and basically tour the West Anchorage District. And then, on Monday, the 26th, there's going to be a work session preceding the West Anchorage District Plan hearing, which is then going to be at the Spinard Rec. Center. And then, I anticipate, at that meeting, we will postpone the decision until the 3rd of October so we can get testimony from the airport folks, which are going to be out of town at that particular time. And then we'll probably make our final decision, unless it's a very complicated situation on the West Anchorage District Plan, I would anticipate. So, I mean, we may not make a decision, I don't know. I mean, it's a public hearing document, and it may take a lot longer than that once the changes, because we may end up with a bunch of issue-response situation. But anyway, that's sort of the, I anticipate that's how it's going to happen. I can't direct it, because you guys are going to have to make the decisions to whether we extend it to the 3rd of October. I'm not going to be there that night, so Connie will be running the 26th thing, because I'm going to be down in Kodiak. We've got a launch on the 27th, so I might be around. Okay, okay. That's not mandatory. The trip is not mandatory, but it may be worthwhile.
On the trip, I would suggest that, having been on both sides of the airport fence in my career, I think it's very important for part of that tour to include inside the fence along the South Airpark area, which is the area that's of most, much concern by the local community.
What we need to do, staff is bugged out, huh? Okay. Well, I think the thing to do is make sure that we make that known when we're over there.
And also, I would suspect that, I understand from the airport folks, we were talking on the side, they were saying that they will have comments and suggestions and recommendations.
Okay.
We'll see whether we can come to a conclusion.
Yeah, we may not be able to, you know, thinking about it. Those district plans, they tend to go on and on and on for quite a while. And, I mean, it took us a long time to do that stuff. So that, I may be overly optimistic.
As much as we would like.
Yeah. Anybody have any comments or anything? Yeah.
Yeah, staff is gone, but I think it would be helpful. I don't think we got any kind of cover letter with that tip. And did we?
No.
No, not.
No.
It's really important that we be given some guidance as to what we are supposed to make a decision on. Because I read the whole thing and sent in comments and took up Craig's time and my time. And there was only those two issues that we're supposed to. So we always need to know, if we're making a limited decision, what the limits are, so we don't waste anybody's time. And then the other thing is, I would just second Mr. Wilson's idea of periodic refreshers on what AMATS role, what our role in AMATS is and the criteria they use to rank projects. And, you know, when we evaluate projects as the Citizens Committee, we should be looking to see if they conform with the comp plan or the district plans and the various other plans that we're supposed to be implementing. And there wasn't any of that kind of feedback on these projects. So we do need to have some periodic work sessions or reviews about our role there.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, basically, a lot of people are new since the last time we sat as the AMATS Citizen Advisory. I mean, Nancy, you and I, maybe you were, I don't know. But it's been about, typically, once a year, we do it. We put on that hat. Okay, any other, any other comments or anything?
No, but if that could just be conveyed back to staff, that we would like a cover letter with anything that comes to us that gives us some boundaries.
This is what you're supposed to do. Or this is what we expect of you. Okay, anything else? Oh, yeah, we'll get in the air, but I don't know if it'll get into orbit. So we need a motion to adjourn. Moved by Stacy, seconded by Nancy. Any objection? We're gone.